Welcome to South St. Paul City Hall and the Monday, April 26, 2021, meeting of the South St. Paul School Board. Lisa, could you take the role, please?
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lollardi?
Here.
Inspector Arndt?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Diaz?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Chair Walker?
Here.
That's seven present at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to take care of one piece of business before we get to the good stuff. And that's the approval of the meeting agenda for tonight and the minutes from our past meetings. That's the school board meeting agenda for today, April 26, 2021. The committee of the whole meeting minutes from our last meeting, April 12, 2021, and the minutes from the school board meeting that same day on April 12, 2021. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and those are approved. Now, we'll invite Chad Sackhour back up to the podium and welcome him and thank him for coming in with his group tonight.
Gotcha. Thank you, School Board Chair Walker, South St. Paul School Board, Dr. Webb. Thanks for having us here this evening. Appreciate everything that you are doing as an active board to keep our schools and our kids functioning in a way and allowing us to have a winter and a fall and a spring, you know, and be active and having our kids engaged in the things that they love outside of the classroom from 2:30 until 10 o'clock. Normally, this room would be packed. I'd have a bunch of kids standing around. And as you guys know, we're just kind of pivoting and going in different directions. And we normally would have another 30 kids and we'd have activities here. So I'm just trying to get on your calendar to slowly start bringing other groups in just as the year progresses and moves forward. So tonight, what I have with us are some of our winter head coaches and a couple of the students that are standouts with them, a lot of seniors tonight to kind of recognize them and have an opportunity to talk about all the great things that transpired from January until March as we went through this abbreviated winter season. But nevertheless, this group behind me did a remarkable job of finding new ways of teaching and instructing and keeping kids safe, finding ways to compete, getting kids in spaces that they just weren't in for a while and back with their friends and around one another and in a space that is so instrumental for kids' development and the things that they remember through high school. So I'm going to kind of put my mask back on and I'm going to turn the microphone over to just different coaches and kind of let them talk a little bit about their seasons and then kind of talk about the whole group there quietly at the end. So first, Don Nyheart, our wrestling coach, section champions, and I'll let him kind of talk about things. Coach Nyheart?
All right. Well, good evening, Chair Walker and members of the board, Dr. Webb. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight just to share a little bit about some of the awesome things that our South St. Paul kids were able to accomplish over the last several months in our winter activities. So I apologize, I'll be reading a lot because there were a lot of good things. I don't want to forget them, so I'm just going to keep looking down. As the head wrestling coach, I was fortunate to be able to work with some really great student athletes through a very trying yet rewarding wrestling season. There were a lot of doubts throughout the year about what things were going to look like as far as our sport. Starting in October, we worked on a modified schedule that was again revamped in December and then again at what seemed like several more times over the following weeks. We had a lot of changes over our season. Our coaching staff and our wrestling families are very thankful for the support and flexibility, especially the flexibility of Mr. Sackhour, Mrs. Nyheart, Safeway Bus Company, our custodial staff and all the folks that just helped us keep the wheels on the bus and make our season an enjoyable one and allowing our kids to showcase their work and all the time that they had put in over the winter months and all the years prior in training. So I'd like to take a minute to highlight some of the accomplishments of our kids. Throughout the season, we had 28 wrestlers participate on the team this year. Our captains and their varsity records, just the first few I'm going to list. First, Quinn Christoffersen here. He was 29 and four on the season. Our other captains were Roman Cortez, who was 21 and seven, Max Beeler, who was 25 and seven, Jared Stroud, who had a 20 and seven record, and then Will Nyheart, who had a 28 and four record. So those five wrestlers all finished as section 4AA champs for our team and qualified for the state individual tournament. And they all also earned academic all-section honors for our team. Freshman Andrew Schwab also earned academic all-section honors and was also a state qualifier along with freshman Callan Stroud. We had five other wrestlers finish in the top four in our section, which earned them a spot in the preliminary state tournament, which was a different setup this year from all the years past. We had four wrestlers earn either all-conference or honorable mention all-conference honors. Team finished with a 21 and six varsity dual meet record and finished as section 4AA team champs, which is pretty cool, and qualified for the state team tournament for just the third time that we've been able to do that. Quinn here played a big role in all of that. Quinn, who's here tonight with me, advanced all the way to the state finals individually in the individual tournament and finished as the class AA 195-pound state runner-up, which was, yep, that was an accomplishment. This is the 10th time only, which in our long history, we've only had 10 kids make it to the state finals. So he was the 10th to do that. Couple of them are doubled up, but Quinn is the seventh wrestler to ever reach the finals. So Quinn also earned a spot on the academic all-state first team, so means he was in the top 14, number one at his weight class academically and combined with his accomplishments on the mat. He was third, the third South St. Paul wrestler to earn a spot on the academic all-state first team. This honor was based on career wins, state tournament place, and then cumulative GPA. Quinn also finished number three overall in our school all-time wins list with 174 career wins, which puts him right up there with some pretty big names. He earned all-conference honors five times in his career and he's only the second wrestler to do that, so pretty big accomplishment there. He was just the fourth wrestler to be a five-time state qualifier for us. We had only three others do that before him. He plans to attend college next year, likely at St. John's University, where he plans to play football and I keep saying, I'm hopeful he might continue to wrestle. One last side note I'd like to share is just not to steal Quinn's thunder here, but just this last week, I got to go with Quinn and his family out to watch his brother Gavin, who was here with us two years ago, 2019, South St. Paul grad, who wrestled in the national junior college wrestling tournament. So in the national tournament, he was a national finalist and ended up being national runner-up and was the second time finishing as an All-American, which is a pretty cool experience to go hang out with their family and watch Gavin do that. So South St. Paul has been very fortunate to have the Christoffersens as students and as athletes over the years. Congratulations to his parents on a job well done. Big thank you to their parents, the Christoffersen family. All in all, with all the hurdles, distractions, challenges we had this season with our program, our kids really impressed me. They rose to the occasion of, you know, what they were dealing with. They followed protocols, they kept positive attitudes, worked daily to find ways to succeed in wrestling as well as in the classroom. And that's all I have to share with you this evening. So thank you again for supporting our programs and for having us here tonight.
Great job.
Thank you.
Quinn, that was quite a list he read off. Congratulations and well done.
Quinn, I just want to tell you, you know, I followed your career and if it doesn't seem to work out at St. John's, University of Wisconsin River Falls is only 30 minutes away.
No, just make sure, make sure that St. John's works out for you because that's the place to be. Congratulations, Quinn.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yeah. You know, so just kind of recognizing Don and he won't say, like, a ton of time, right? He's been with these kids literally since, you know, talking about his son, probably from three or four years old when they've been on the mat. You've probably known Quinn how long? Yeah, right?
Crying aloud in the corner.
Right? You know, and so the emotion you can see in his eyes, right? Just a ton of time, ton of investment, just does things in such a great way. You know, Quinn wouldn't have been up here as a football guy had we been able to do something like this and has been here before, so it's nice to see him be able to get in and have that opportunity here this evening. And the great thing is, right, who would have thought in COVID you could wrestle, right? Everybody was asking me over and over, like, how is this a thing? And all the way throughout, I think we had one kind of situation that flared up. But probably the most cleanest, most elegant room in the entire building over there is our wrestling room, right, in terms of disinfectant and cleaning and washing, static sprayers. I could now pull this mop better than, you're about the only one. You know, so it's great, so kudos to you guys. The rest of you, if you talk this much, we're going to probably have some problems, all right?
We're okay.
That being said, yep.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to have Lindsay Peterson and Bryn Bower step forward. Lindsay is our assistant coach, Bryn is captain. Come on up, guys. Austin Junker is our head coach. The reason he's not here with us is he became a father this morning at 12:08 to a little girl by the name of Riley June, who'll probably be here in 18 years hopefully or 16 years doing the exact same thing. So Lindsay is stepping in and Bryn Bower, senior captain. So Coach Peterson?
Thank you. Like you said, I didn't know I was going to be here until a few hours ago, so I didn't have anything quite prepared like Mr. Nyheart. But I have been with this program for seven years now. Got to watch Bryn play in our youth program and then start on our program as an eighth grader, so we've been together for quite a long time, making lots of memories on and off the court. We didn't have quite the successful record this year as we would have liked, but we had a lot of successes on the court that didn't show on our record. So we made a point this year to really make sure our program was more of like a family versus just a basketball program. So we spent a lot of time making sure that our core values were important and shown on and off the court. And I think if you ask any of the girls this year, that they loved being able to just be together, make memories together. They just succeeded on and off the court in so many different ways, so it was fun to watch them grow as a family, to set kind of that path for our program for the future and all the youth coming up. So it was a great season. We were so thankful we got to actually play. That Bryn and her fellow seniors got to have a senior year after being in the program for so long, so it was a great year for the girls' basketball team.
Yay.
Yeah, kind of just like she said, like, South St. Paul basketball has always been like just such a good family aspect and I've gotten to know so many people just from getting to be a part of this program and just getting to, like, gain more skills throughout it. I, luckily enough, am going to play basketball at River Falls next year.
All right.
So, and I know that I wouldn't have gotten there without this program, so.
Great.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
You don't get away without a question. Do you have any sisters?
I have one sister, a 10th grader.
Lauren, she's a player too.
Okay, and you have any more cousins because you don't know that I know that your cousin played too.
Yes, I've seen your cousin as well.
And I don't think she has any younger sisters.
Nope, she's the youngest.
But congratulations. If you have any problems over there, don't drop my name, okay? Thanks, Bryn. And I've watched you a few times and I was really impressed.
Thank you.
Shoot the three.
Yeah.
Right? Once again, Coach Peterson touched on it, right? You talk about trending, and this is a group that's trending in the right direction. Austin and Lindsay and Andrew and Elise, all the work that they're doing is just so impactful and having role models like Bryn, right, that are continuing their passion and continuing to move on. Where are you going to study at River Falls?
Biology.
Biology?
Yeah.
Okay. I was hoping you were going to say teaching and education, but that's just selfishly.
Biology teacher.
Right? But just having role models like Bryn kind of being in and around has just been phenomenal. So we don't want to see her go, but we definitely want her to move on, so thanks a lot, Bryn. Appreciate it. Did you get one of these fine stickers? Next up, sitting here, I have Gabby De Schmidt and Anna Ware that are here representing our dance team. Tara St. Martin, our head coach, I think her and her husband have a deal. He coaches in the spring and she has the winter, so he's busy with track. And so there are three little children that live up in kind of Tangle Town. Tara is there kind of parenting and being mom tonight and has had Gabby kind of step in as the designated hitter, so come on up, Gab.
As you said, Tara has three kids under five that she corrals Orion's coaching, so filling in for her for today. I'm Gabby. I've been coaching South St. Paul for three years and this is our senior captain's, Anna Ware. She's played a really important role this past season, has been the natural and supportive team leader, so we'd like to thank you for that. On behalf of the coaching staff and team, we'd like to start by thanking you for having us here today and for recognizing our team for this past season. Although it was a unique season, there were many positives that came out of the year. The dancers displayed a great amount of teamwork, drive, adaptability, and one of the best things to happen this season were the relationships that were built at our dance team banquet, I think our last meet. A lot of them said that their favorite thing about this year was the relationships they got to build with each other. We found new ways to make connections and talk about our strengths, weaknesses, and how we can reach out our goals over the year. We spent four weeks having practices over Zoom, which is quite a lot for cleaning a routine that's supposed to be in sync with each other. Once we were back in person, practices were efficient and we had fun every single day that we were together. The dancers worked very hard. We saw great improvement in the short time that we did have together and we are excited to still have the chance to complete this season. We finished third overall in our conference and fifth overall in our section. We'd also like to give a special recognition for our six seniors, five other ones who've been with us for the six years, the past program, since they were little seventh graders. They've been dedicated group and have been positive leaders, especially throughout this season. So I'd like to say thank you to them and that we'll miss them in the future. So thank you for having us here today and we appreciate your continued support.
And thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Like they touched on, you know, dance is one of those things where they're so close together because it's kick and jazz. And as I'm finding out, much of this disease is spread, you know, just with heavy breathing and proximity. And that sport, right, is really one of those that there is just so much heavy breathing in the fact that they're able to kind of do what they do with the masks all winter was impressive. Anna, I'm lucky, she's in my connections class, so she's a kid that I get to, I've learned more about this school year, you know. I've always known her to be a good kid, but I've gotten to kind of see her personality a little bit more as we've had some time together in the fall and the winter. So congratulations to those guys, so thank you. Next up, I have coach, our boys' hockey coach, Peter Schultz, and I'll let him introduce his student.
Hey, how's everybody doing? Good to see everybody. Neighbor, hi.
Hi, neighbor.
Committee member, hello. Ms. Brandeckert, it's wonderful to see you. You have a great attitude and we appreciate you. Boys' hockey this year, young team. I'll tell you a little bit about us. 11, 10, ninth and 10th grade letter winners. That's the most we've ever had on our, in our program. This is my 23rd year at South St. Paul, so a unique thing is happening and that is Mason DeZell, I commonly will refer to him as Travis because I coached his dad, and starting to have that happen, starting to get the second generation, which is cool, which is great. Great families, we love them.
My son's brilliant.
And really, we're just really fortunate to work with the kind of kids that we do. We were really young, but some important statistics to me, we had 14 kids in our program that had a 3.5 GPA or above. We had 25 kids that had at least a 3.0 GPA and we did not have a single player miss a practice for an unexcused reason all year. So to do that in the situation that we were in with COVID just says a lot about the character of our kids and our families, so we're really appreciative of them. We were led by four seniors. It's all we had. We had four kids that were seniors. And one thing I appreciate about South St. Paul that we continue to do, three of them are playing baseball right now. They're playing Simley, all of our captains are. Cole Seitar, who was an all-conference goaltender, is starting in the outfield right now. Matt Winstonson is on the mound. If you saw last year, we didn't get to do this meeting, but Matthew scored the triple overtime goal in the section semis to put us in the final last year. That had like 25,000, I'm not a social media guy as Travis, or Travis, as Mason knows, but that's a big deal apparently. And Luke McClellan is the catcher for the baseball team and the other senior was Cole Anderson. We had great leaders, we have great kids, really proud to be a South St. Paul guy. As an alumni and as a teacher and as a community member, we really do have great kids, so we're lucky. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
For being here.
Like Coach Schultz or Peter touched on, right, there's a lot of things in this conference, the Metro East and this side, size of school we are, and there's some really talented schools that just represent in the state tournament year in and year out. And having, you know, state champions like Gentry Academy and Monta Meda and Hill Murray a year ago, it's just, there's no, it's a challenging thing. And our kids are resilient and our community is the exact same way and it doesn't shock me at all. Now to have them come up would be our girls' head hockey coach, Dave Palmquist, and I'll let him introduce his student.
Thank you, Chad, very much. Thank you, school board, so much. Dr. Webb, all of you, it's, you know, South St. Paul, what a unique community. I mean, I run through the streets of South St. Paul and see many of you running, see you around South St. Paul and thank you so much for having us. My wife always says, you never, you don't get nervous when you do stuff like this. I go, you always get nervous when you speak in front of people and you want to speak so highly and not forget so many super things that have happened in this room. It's just amazing, young student athletes, amazing coaches, and we get it all done in this small, unique town of South St. Paul, and that's what makes us so special. Pete Schultz said he aged me a little bit, saying that he coached his dad. Well, I mean, Pete was, I think, a senior when I started at South St. Paul, so that really ages me, but I just finished 34 years of coaching hockey and loved it more than I ever have in my life and most importantly, because I get to coach young ladies like McKenna Deering, and I'll get to speak to her shortly. The Packers, well, first of all, I just want to thank everybody, Chad, thank you for everything getting us through this season. Chris Nyheart, Donnie's wife, I mean, Chris runs the school, right? I mean, she's absolutely amazing, getting us through all the protocols and things. They've got a great coaching staff. Our three JV coaches, three former Packers, Jamie Shepherd, who graduated '01, Packer, Bridget Miller and Abby Palmquist, three great role models for these kids coaching our girls. So awesome. And then, of course, my two assistants, Josh Palmquist and Corey McGinn. So just so blessed to have a great coaching staff. That's what makes it so wonderful. Great role models, trying to lead this group. The Packers were awesome again this year. We were a top five or six ranked team throughout the year. It seemed like we were playing a top-five team every single game and basically we were. We had a top, top schedule. The season started off sitting in the bleachers at Woo Arena, trying to sort out how is it going to look in mid-October, ready to go for that November 1 start, and then boom, we're not going to meet again. And then we met again in November, set up a schedule and like the other coaches said, it kept getting pushed back, but to think that we got through a season is remarkable and we did it. We got through, got to play our full schedule of games. Our season, we lost in the section finals to Gentry Academy, a team that eventually got to the state title game. They only lost two games all year to Stillwater and we had beaten them early in the year. So they were certainly a powerhouse that came into the state high school league this year, four to four with four minutes left in the game, and we came up short by a goal, but super, again, proud of the girls and very fortunate to coach them. We had three captains this year, Ella Reynolds, Lily Ramirez and McKenna Deering, three outstanding players. Ella Reynolds tore her ACL in a soccer injury in the fall, and so we lost one of our premier players before the season even started. But again, the old Packer way, the next girl up steps up and lose, I mean, a small town like us, to lose a top player like that's really tough, but the girls just, they found a way and the next girl said, I can do it. And these girls all stepped up and knew they had to do it for each other. But it was a really rewarding season. And McKenna was one of the real pleasures to coach. And a little bit about McKenna Deering. McKenna is the third Deering sister to come through South St. Paul that I've had the pleasure to coach. It's been nine straight years, I believe it has been, to coach a Deering. Just prior to coming over here, I went over and brought dinner to her father, who has been real sick with COVID, who's still on oxygen, been in the hospital quite a bit. So thoughts and prayers with him and so real close-knit family for me and been a big part of my life these last few years. But McKenna is a real special player. She's been All-Metro selection, one of two defenseman in the whole metro area, whether it's Eden Prairie, Edina, White Bear Lake, Stillwater, Wayzetta. She was one of two defenseman named to the All-Metro team. Pretty amazing honor, one of two. The last, we might have been Ashley Albrecht back in '02, '03, Sam LaShaw maybe back in '11 or '12, but really special award for McKenna. She will be playing at Pemiji State. She's a two-time All-State player. She is All-World in this classroom, 3.8 All-State Academic Person, All-Conference for three years. She won the Hobie Baker Character Award for her integrity and honesty and sportsmanship and team player. I would say, and as I wrote this out for her candidacy to miss hockey, she's one of the fiercest competitors that I've ever coached in 34 years and it's to her credit. She is a South St. Paul Packer where it's, she works for everything. Nothing is just handed over to her. She knows that it's going to take work and she puts it to the grind and she does everything she needs to do to be the best she can be. More importantly, to our younger players, she's a role model, drives them everywhere and I guarantee you, we still haven't had our end-of-season banquet, there'll be young ladies and their parents who stand up and say, "Thank you, McKenna, for being the type of person you were to my younger daughter," and that means a lot to me and it meant a lot to our program for sure. Yeah, so for 34 years as I've coached, I've never, you don't want to ever face her, ever. I honestly would tell you, if you had 20 Mac Deering's on your team, you wouldn't lose a game. And it's something that's not coachable. It's just something that she's just grown up with. Her parents have given her those, you know, given her those great skills and values of hard work, determination, effort, all those types of things. So very proud of her. She's going to do great things. I look forward to watching her play in college. Mac, is there a few things you just want to say real quickly?
No. First of all, I just wanted to thank you guys for letting us be here tonight and I mean, I want to say huge thanks to these two, actually. I mean, I've been around, I've known him since I was just little, three, I was really good friends with Bryn, so he's seen everything that I've been through and been playing with Bryn. I want to say thanks to him. Six years, I mean, six years are gone like that. It's crazy. So it was probably the best six years that I've had, though, and I wouldn't be playing hockey in college if it wasn't for the coaches that I had and thank you to my teammates too and I'll miss it.
Do you have any younger sisters? Any more sisters?
I wish. I'm the last one.
Aren't you the Athena Award winner?
I am.
Yes, yes.
Stealing my thunder.
But thank you, everybody, for your support very much. Pack will be back. They're up working out right now, so.
I want to ask McKenna a question.
We talked about David enough, so we don't need to give him any more accolades.
I need to ask McKenna a question.
Yes.
I want to tell you that I was a Packer. Now, I couldn't have made Pete's team because I didn't have a 2.0 grade point average, but I did get to play in three state tournaments and I saw on Town Square TV, I saw you play three times, and I said, jeez, I wish I And I saw on Town Square TV, I saw you play three times. And I said, jeez, I wish I was as good as her in high school. So I wasn't. Otherwise, I might not be sitting here tonight. I don't know. But great season, great team. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good luck at Pemidji State.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we talked about McKenna, right? Obviously, the athlete and the person, all that stuff. So she was our Athena winner this year, right? Bummed me out that I couldn't be there for the second year in a row, right? To be at her table and hear all the wonderful things that Randy Shaver, like, all those Athenas, when they stand up, you feel so inadequate as a person when they go through all their accomplishments and the things that they do. But the thing about McKenna, and it's just, in fact, so do me a favor, take your mask off. She has the greatest smile. Like, I swear, from when she's been this little, it's just been dimples and teeth and everything about her. So congratulations, kid. I love you. All right?
Thank you.
Best luck in the future.
Thank you.
All right. McKenna Deering. Next guy that I'm going to have come up is, well, he's almost in the paper more than David has been this past year. And so I'm going to take all the credit for this hire. It was so phenomenal by me. It was amazing, the time and effort I put into this search committee to go out there and find somebody. Mr. Ochaki was my wingman throughout the process. But that being said, I'm going to turn over to our boys' basketball coach, Matt McAllister.
I'm going to have to hire Mr. Sexhauer as my publicist as well, work out the details of what that looks like. Thank you, guys, for having us. This is awesome. What a cool event. And it's just nice to be out and to be with people again. And small steps, but getting towards normalcy is pretty great. You know, we've talked a lot, and a lot of the coaches have talked about the people that have helped make this happen. Coach Sexhauer's been awesome. I mean, his steady leadership and sound advice and making tough decisions and the juggling of the schedules and the protocols. And he's just been just a rock for this program. And we couldn't have done it. I know for me, just personally, just using him as a sounding board, he's been awesome. So thank you, Coach. In terms of our guys and our team, man, what a year. What a great season they had. We returned a lot from a team last year that really had some success. We had an 18-win season prior, the year prior, and knew we had a chance to be pretty good. But I don't think that everybody realized, you know, within the basketball community at large, how good we really could be. And we started the season winning 17 straight games, raising to number two in the state. Through that 17-game winning streak, we became the conference champs for the first time in 51 years at South St. Paul. Just a testament to those guys and their buy-in. And to win 17 straight games against some of the competition that we did, you know, beating Tartan two times and North St. Paul and teams that are a lot bigger than us, schools that are a lot bigger than us. Just their focus and their commitment to each other and their dedication and kind of buying into something bigger than themselves and playing for the school and the program. And then in the, so we win the conference tournament, we go to the section finals for the first time in 24 years. The result was not what we were hoping, but it was a 93 to 90 game against Ridgefield. And, you know, it's one of those games, I talk to college basketball coaches, because we're fortunate to have a bunch of young men who are getting recruited. And they say, Coach, if you would just remove yourself, that was the best high school game I ever watched. I mean, it was 93 to 90 with big shots both ways, young men stepping up and a great environment. We were able to get some fans in there. It was just, it was a really cool and special moment for our young guys and our program. You don't get to have a 19-2 season and all those accolades without some pretty awesome, awesome young men. We have Marquis Glav with us here today, and we'll talk about him in a second. We'll save the best for last. But we had seven players voted All-Conference selection within our team.
Wow.
So that's more than our starting lineup even. So that's just a testament to our depth. And all except for Marquis are juniors. So we'll be back again next year. Alonso Dodd is a young man that gets a lot of recognition, and it's deserved. He's an amazing young man and an honorable student. He also was named to the Star Tribune All-Metro team. As far as we can tell, he's the first Packer basketball player to be first-team Star Tribune All-Metro. This past week, he was just named AP All-State First Team, one of five players in the state.
Wow, cool.
And only two juniors were named to that team. So just amazing accomplishments. Throughout the season, he became the school's all-time leading scorer as well. So he's putting that number far out of reach at this point for anybody else. And then we've come to Marquis, three-time All-Conference, has kind of seen the whole gamut of what this program has been, and his quiet leadership and just steady and infectious, doing the right thing, honorable student. He's everything that we want our program to be about in terms of young men and character building. We try to use this program to empower young men on the court, off the court, in the classroom, and he's a walking example of that. We talk about family a lot. I know a lot of programs do, but we try to live it. And my family, my personal biological family, I come to practice a lot. My kids come, they look up to this guy. I mean, there's not a practice, whatever's going on, if my daughters walk in, he runs over and gives them knuckles and just puts a smile on their face. And that's the type of culture that we have because of kids like him. When we took the, kind of the state by storm, winning 17 straight games, Mike Max came in and did a feature article on us. Carol Levin did a feature piece on us, the Pioneer Press. This was a lot of fun, not only from a basketball standpoint, but just what these young men are about. And I think that really came out in Mike Max's piece and some of the other feature articles and publications that we had about us. So it was really an awesome, awesome season. And do you want to say anything, Marquis?
I mean, yeah, thank you for having me, all you guys. Yeah, obviously, it was just fun to be a part of this team because it's crazy going from playing as a freshman and being 0-19, and now we're 17. And no, it's way different. So, yeah, obviously, I like to give it to this man. He came to this program, he changed it all. He made it more about family, like you said. And yeah, I think that's what we needed because we had, we always had the same kids. It's just we were missing that one piece, and Coach Matt really brought us all together. So.
Yeah, so cool. That's awesome.
Wonderful. That's awesome.
I love those Cinderella stories.
You know, and Matt will, it's been a whole group, right? Coach Mac is awesome, and there's no doubt. He's the guy that's at the wheel, steering the ship. But it's nice to see four other coaches that are all bought in and kind of pushing in a direction. So it is five. And Tracy, his wife, and their kids, they do it in a way where it's, they're all in, right? And it's not just him. They're at every single thing. You know, she was running the concession stand before COVID and just trying to do everything we can. So we can't wait, right, our both boys and our girls' basketball programs to have our competition gym open in 2021, coming in November, to have these groups kind of highlighted again because, once again, trending in just a great direction. You know, and talking about this kid here, Deuce, Marquis, as his football coach, right, all the same things that Matt has said, watching him kind of from this age, right, all the way through from vets. I have put so much on this kid, and he's responded in every single way. You know what I mean? From commitment and character things to pulling rum-dums, I'm going to just call them rum-dums, out of class. And having him kind of just say, this is what we do here at South St. Paul, and this is how we act as a seventh grader, as a sixth grader, or as an eighth grader. Because he's a role model, right? And that's the beauty, right? If you look at the kids, the seniors, if you guys would stand up again just for us, like, this is our school. What a great observation to be able to take a look at what our building looks like, right? And the things and the passions and what they do. We can't do any better. Like, there is no other school, right, that is, they're all like us. We're all doing stuff. But it's things like this that have me so happy for our future and the direction that we're going and that they're going to give back. It's just, it's a great thing. So thank you, Keith, and thank you, Bryn, Anna, Mac, you. I just appreciate everything that you guys do as leaders for our building. So I tip my cap. Thanks a lot. All right? He's got a question. Go ahead.
I have a challenge for you.
Okay.
Now, are you aware of the other junior that made All-State?
Yes.
Are you aware that he lives in South St. Paul?
I, I.
So my challenge to you is to get him away from that private school and back to South St. Paul. If you can do that, you become elevated to a Dede.
So I, as. Don't look to me.
As I understand it, as long as the school board sanctions it, we can improve it.
There's a lot to that one. And you're right, he was walking a hallway. But kudos to Coach and his group of guys and everything that they do throughout. I opened it up, we have two groups that couldn't be here with us tonight, right? Just as we changed the date, our gymnastics coach is moving her daughter to California, right? So we had a coach that just had a daughter today, and we have another one that's taking her 22-year-old to the next phase of life out in California. So Coach Dorancey couldn't be here with us. But what an amazing job Julie has done within the culture, right? Once again, it's just this relationship, passion, peace, and a direction of taking young girls in a direction. And once again, for the first time, having a gymnast in like seven, eight, nine years going to state, and Alyssa Boudreaux, who is a really young little 10th grader that'll be back for us in the future. And then Ty Kier, our boys' swim coach, who couldn't be here either, and the passion and the excitement that he is building within a program, both at Central Square, right? And we're excited to be using that facility as much as we can. But Stephen Eichen is a junior that made it to state as well. So two other groups that we just didn't have a chance to talk about. Hopefully, like I said, I'm looking forward to an invitation to coming back and bringing some activities groups, you know what I mean? Because we had robotics running this winter, and we got show choir going right now. And we got through speech and debate, and we got our one-act play. And hopefully, we're going to be producing our junior production here in the next week or two. All of these wonderful things that just continue to happen, right, outside the classroom. And an opportunity to get kids in here is just a wonderful thing. I'm looking forward to next week. Unfortunately, we're not having parents, and we're not having you guys there for our 74th Annual Activities Awards. We're not calling it a banquet. Our 74th Annual Activities Awards, we're going to do it in the auditorium. We have 91 seniors. It's going to be like the Oscars. We're putting pictures on chairs in the theater and kind of moving them around. We'll be bringing them up and kind of rolling them through and giving them their hardware, putting some of the Oscar winners, you know, they're getting their names drawn a little bit more down in the front row to kind of come up. But that will be online. Mr. Holson's helping us kind of produce that. So look for that link from Mrs. Childs and all of our social media coming out here by the end of the week. So once again, I tip my cap to everybody here for the ability to be able to run through a winter like this and a fall and a spring. And we just continue to find ways. Shawnee Krueger wasn't talked about, our COVID coordinator. Anytime I would get a phone call from her in the weekend, I would kind of send shivers down my spine. But you know what? We're finding ways to adapt and adjust. And this is, you know, the term new normal, right, is just where we're at. So I appreciate you giving us the opportunity. Thanks for your leadership. Chuck, thank you for all your time and commitment, and appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
Chad, I'm not done with you yet.
Pardon me?
I'm not done with you yet.
Yeah, done with me yet. All right.
If you could look back at the winter sports season and give your overall program a grade, what would you give it?
You know, sometimes I think we're really hard graders on ourself when we kind of take a look at things. But it's for sure a B-plus or higher. I mean, in my, you know, I was here before Peter, so this is 25, 24 for me. I don't know that we've ever had two outstanding kids, right? The high-end All-Metro, like we've had with McKenna and Alonso, to that ability. I felt really, really good. Like, this conference is, I've watched our numbers, right, in terms of bodies in the building decrease. But we're able to kind of stay very competitive against everybody else, right? So if we can make it through a season healthy, by the time we make it to sections, we're going to be pretty tough across the board. And you pick the activity or the sport, that that's where it's at. And we're blessed to have kids doing more than one thing, right? I mean, Quinn Christopherson, Marquis, McKenna, you know, Bryn, all these guys could easily just dive into one thing and just do, but that's not who they are. They're just, they're role models. They're constantly giving back, and they're just multi, multi thing. Like, they enjoy, you know, Quinn's a heck of a football player. I don't say he's not a great wrestler, but he's that much better of a football player than he is wrestler, in my opinion, right? So it's just like, they have second-tier things. So I'd say B-plus, A-minus. You know, I don't think we're ever where we want to be, but it's a solid grade for sure.
Can I give you my grade?
What's that?
Are you willing to, or are you able to read at a high level?
Well, you know, I got cheaters, and I sent them down over there. So I am from Iowa, A-plus. I appreciate it.
Chad, I appreciate the season you had, you know, in the face of diversity. You couldn't have brought our community closer together and make us feel good about being quarantined as you did this last year.
Well, you know, we're finding ways. I appreciate that. The streaming thing, we're just continuing to find avenues to make things accessible for all. So not, do you just have to show up at our door, but just finding ways to have it seen and have family members be in Arizona or in Iowa and be able to watch their loved ones do the things that they do. So, yeah.
Thank you. Let's give Chad a round.
I have a comment. I have a comment, too, for Coach and Marquis. And I can say this now that Coach Schultz is gone. I have a budding hockey player, young hockey player. And we, I was brought to a basketball game last season, and I was shouting and standing on my bleacher and, like, out of my mind. And so you have converted a hockey mom to a basketball humongous fan. I had such a blast. We left there like singing. And that just didn't happen before. So thank you. It was, it's just pure, pure entertainment. So much fun.
That's very kind. Thank you. Hopefully, we can have more conferences.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get him to play some defense. Yeah.
Well, he held Richfield in '93.
I love him. That's our relationship. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, seniors.
All right. Oh, it's always so much fun. Just love the passion and the enthusiasm and just the fun that they have in telling us about their seasons. It's always a quality, quality and action report. So. Well, we'll move on and talk about the public listening session. Again, this meeting, there were no submissions for the public listening session. So I'll just, once again, remind everyone that if you want to submit something to the school board, we're more than willing to read it. The protocol is out on the website. We will acknowledge the contact and that someone else at a meeting will read your comments and then have someone follow up with you. And you can always call or email any one of us. All that is out on the website. So with that, we will move on to Dr. Webb and his updates.
All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So just, how great was that?
It was great.
Wonderful.
It was very great.
So, you know, just every kid sitting out there was just amazing. And, you know, one of the best parts about being back is you can walk into any one of our schools and just see how amazing our kids are and how amazing our staff is day in and day out. So, you know, I was at Capoja to start the day today, and there were two teachers in the hallway, and they were like cheering because they had just spent two weeks in quarantine with their classes. And they were just so happy to be back. And the kids are happy to be back. And so it's not without bumps in the road. COVID's still here. We're still managing through. We're still protected throughout the day. But we have so much to be proud of that we're keeping the system running in a pandemic. So. And what an incredible group of kids, coaches. Chuck, thank you for your leadership. And Chad's just unbelievable here at late, late nights and regularly kind of game after, practice after game throughout the whole school year. So. Tonight, I'm going to give you just a brief report on Central Square Community Center. So we have been in conversation with the city really for about the past six months. We, it's no secret that there's been significant financial decline, and not just this year in a pandemic, but really over about the past eight years, when we really trace back and really dig deep into the financials. What we found in a lot of our financial reporting is not all the financials were reported. And many of the costs to really keep And many of the costs to really keep the doors open at Central Square really weren't transparent and being forthcoming. So in a lot of the conversations with the city in the past six months, we both learned a lot about financial contributions and the support to just keep those doors open. The good news that I'm going to start with, and I'll start with good news, is that we will keep the doors open at Central Square. We're going to hold true to our commitment for our community to maintain strong senior programming, strong activity program, strong activity programs there and gymnastics and swimming and all the like. So I'll start with the positive and good news. There's also plenty of challenge if you look behind the scenes at Central Square, and I'm going to touch on that for a few minutes here tonight. So over this past six months, we've been in conversation with the city and we actually got to the point where we, in our management meetings, had conversations that one of us really needed to step up and lead. And that the current partnership in its current form really was, we were losing money and had been for the past number of years. We offered to sell the building to the city. We offered to sell Central Square to the city for $1.65 million. And the board made that tough call about three weeks ago. It went in front of the city and the city said, "No, we aren't going to buy Central Square." And just for the public's sake, the norm of community centers in communities is typically the city does run a community center. It's not the norm for the school district to run the community center. But at last week's Monday night meeting, the city did vote to not opt into the Central Square partnership, thus ending the partnership agreement, which means that we need to step up and lead as a school district. And we will, and we'll do it well, and we'll bring in community ed to lead at Central Square. And we'll do our best to make the program stronger, Central Square stronger, and continue to seek partnership throughout our community. We think there are opportunities that have yet to be seen. Public, private, community partnerships as we grow what is Central Square. There's also future conversations to be had, even about our own public library and where that lands in our city of South St. Paul. So we have lots of interesting conversations ahead. And tonight, I just wanted to be really clear that we are going to uphold our commitment to the city, to our seniors, to have strong and expanded senior programming. I'm fully confident in Jean Zender and her ability to partner with our tri-district and maximize what happens at Central Square. As I mentioned, we'll continue to explore additional partnership. We look for continued partnership with the city. We also want to be fiscally responsible. So I can't promise you that everything's going to look identical to the way it does now at Central Square because we're not financially viable. We have to make some changes. We just don't want to make drastic changes. And we'll do our best to maintain the best of what is at Central Square and continue to make tough decisions and grow Central Square for our future. So in a nutshell, I'm here tonight just to report and report to our community that South St. Paul Public Schools will step up and lead. We asked for the building to be sold. That wasn't the right fit at this time for the city. If they came back in another month and said, "We'll buy the building," we would sell it still today. But for right now, that's not in the cards. So, moving forward, we'll lead, we'll strengthen, and we'll grow all of what is Central Square. I'll quiet down for any questions you have about tonight's report. I'm putting you out of the spot because that wasn't in the notes for asking questions. So I just, otherwise, I'll keep moving to the superintendent report.
Anything?
Not at this.
Did I bring up?
Let's go to the superintendent report. And I'm not sure if I've got, if I've got a mirror on here.
You must.
Okay. Give me one second. And can you re-coach me on the, weren't you the mirror guy? So I'm going to give you the song and dance slow opening. If I go into my settings here. Can I stand it? So in our superintendent update for this week, we're highlighting, again, a handful of kids from around the school district. We highlight some of what's the best of our international baccalaureate programming and give you an inside look at the schools. What's amazing, if you look at the pictures in the PowerPoint tonight, thank you, is if you, even if the kids are wearing masks, you can see the joy in their eyes by being back to school. We had our Earth Day, Cleanup Day last week. There's some shots from around the schools masked up and happy to be in school. Today, we sent out messaging for COVID testing and also for just all of our protocols for COVID and the reminders that we have. But if families want to do testing with South St. Paul Schools, they just got an email from our school district to know how to do testing. We also have information on protocols and vaccines in that same newsletter, so some of our oldest students are now eligible for that as well. For summer programming, we have great summer programming that we've planned for pre-K through grade 12. We have a list of everything from Early Learning Summer Blast, the Summer Learning Academy, Packer Preview, Middle School Summer Program, Summer Kids Choice, and High School Tutoring. If you've been out and about by one of our elementary schools, you're going to see this bucket with some orange flags. That came through our grant with our Safe Routes Coordinator that was able to get this program up and running, to have crossing flags. So don't necessarily have to have the crossing guard there. An individual kid could make sure that they are seen crossing any busy street, and we have many of them here in South St. Paul. But whether a crossing guard is there at any time of day, they can be better seen with the flag. We got another ship grant from Dakota County for students to move mindfully. And here's just some great stretching activities in one of our kindergarten classrooms. This is my favorite picture of the whole slideshow of the kid looking through kind of his magnifying glass and putting the great science that we have going on to the test in our early grades. We have a couple of events coming up. On May 5th, we actually have the 74th Annual Activities and Awards Night. We also have our Elementary Distance Learning Materials Pickup. And two, two events we wanted to highlight for you as well. If you want any of our board meeting materials and minutes, this is our tree to follow. And I'll go back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Moving on to the business portion of our meetings, the first item we'll vote on is the consent items, which is the financial claims and the staffing. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent items?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. The policy review is next. There's nothing coming forward on that tonight. So we'll move on to the, for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2021 budget revisions. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Aaron Bushburger is here. We'll see if he wants to make any comments before our discussion.
Thank you, Chair Walker, school board members, and Superintendent Webb. Just a reminder, we are proposing to revise our current year budget. This is a pretty common practice based on financial changes that we see throughout the year. So this information was brought to the Finance Committee of the Board last week. It was also presented in a little bit more detail at the earlier committee of the whole meeting. I will make a couple of brief comments. Fortunately, we were able to achieve some budget savings in different areas of the budget, including utilities, transportation, staffing, and substitute budgets. So that was a real positive. However, I will mention as well, we do have additional financial pressures because of this. We've seen an increase in some areas of our budget. We are seeing some decreases in revenue in some of our other programming aspects as well. In addition to that, food service, as we presented, does have some financial challenges given how, how the year has gone from a meal distribution perspective. And community education, we also saw some challenges from the emergency care program that we ran earlier in the school year. So as we talked about at the committee of the whole, a lot of changes, a lot of financial changes this year, but we are proposing that you approve these budget revisions as listed in your packet.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the budget revisions are approved. Thank you, Aaron. Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution proposing to place individuals with continuing contract rights on an unrequested leave of absence. Lisa, will you please read that resolution?
The resolution proposing to place individuals with continuing contract rights on unrequested leave of absence, be it resolved by the School Board of Special School District Number Six, South St. Paul Public Schools, that this, that is proposed that the following individuals who are teachers of said school district be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits effective at the end of the 2020-21 school year on June 30th, 2021 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A dot 40 subdivision 10 and the collective bargaining agreement between district and South St. Paul Principals Association.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion for the approval of that resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Raj? Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. The next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers. And again, we'll ask Lisa to read that resolution.
The resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers, be it resolved by the School Board of Special School District Number Six pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot 40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contracts of these probationary teachers in Special School District Number Six are hereby terminated at the end of the 2020-21
Thank you. Do I have a motion for that resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, Lisa, please call the roll.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arund?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas.
Thank you. And that resolution is approved. Next is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Agreement for Student Teaching between the University of Northwestern St. Paul and South St. Paul Public Schools for the 2020, excuse me, 2021-22 school year. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Webb, do you have any comments or introduction on that?
Every time we have a partnership and a new student teacher stepping forward, we like to bring this for approval for the board. So tonight, our partnership is between South St. Paul and Northwestern St. Paul.
Very good. That's good. Any other discussion?
What subject is it in?
I'm not sure about the subject. Put our HR person to the test, but we're approving the broad agreement tonight, so.
Okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then that motion passes and it is approved.
Kathy, did you know a subject area? Math.
Math it is. Thank you.
Thanks.
And then the last business item is for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2020 through 2022 custodial and maintenance agreement. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll just, you know, just thank the custodial union. Thanks to our district negotiators as well for reaching an agreement and we always like to keep those moving forward, so thanks.
Very good, indeed. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and that agreement is approved. Thank you. Then we move on to the informational items. First will be the board members' reports and committee updates. And we'll start off to my right with Inspector Arund.
I have nothing tonight, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Monica?
The one thing that is both city-related and our state-related is, for those who haven't heard, we are, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, we are keeping all eight of our congressional districts. So a big shout-out and thank you to any group. I know lots of nonprofit groups, I know the city, I know lots that the county, all participated in helping people fill out the census. And we managed to keep all eight congressional districts by 89 people over the state of New York. And so when it comes to the census, everyone literally does count.
That's great. Indeed. Thank you for that. And Linda?
Um, yes, I have a couple committee reports. So the tri-district committee met last week, just really great, looking for any folks in Inver Grove Heights who are looking to be a representative of our tri-district community ed board. And what else? Equity Alliance report. Sebastian Witherspoon was here earlier today. And like Dave had reported, you know, Equity Alliance is definitely booming, doing lots and lots of professional days for school districts. Really can't wait to get back in the schools. They do a lot of student groups. So just when you think about any equity work at all, even for businesses, think about Equity Alliance.
Awesome. Thank you.
First thing I'd like to do, this is something that I was going to bring up at our last board meeting, but we had to change things due to different circumstances. I want to put a congratulations out to our junior basketball player, Alonso Dodd. As he was a finalist for Mr. Basketball in the state of Minnesota, he was in one of the top six chosen for that, for that honor. So congratulations to Alonso for representing South St. Paul in that, in that honor as being a finalist for Mr. Basketball. And just as a reminder to all students, that the Roxanne Bliss Silver Apple Award is currently up for nominations. If you would like to nominate a staff member, it can be a teacher, a lunchperson, anyone in your building, custodial staff, assistants, you can nominate that person for that award to the Educational Foundation. The nomination must be turned in by May 19th. And the forms are available online, or you can contact the Educational Foundation to get the forms. And a couple other little fundraiser that Lincoln Center is going to be hosting this coming weekend, this Friday night and Saturday afternoon, they are having a lemonade stand as a fundraiser. This Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then also on Saturday from noon until 2:00 o'clock, you can drive by Lincoln you can drive by Lincoln Center near door number three and purchase some lemonade. I don't have the price as what they're charging for it right currently with me, but you can drive by and support the Lincoln Center PTA fundraiser. And one thing that Capoja Education Center is putting out, their health office, is asking if anyone has any children's pants that they could donate for the students. They're looking for boys' pants, sizes four to 10, and girls' pants, sizes four to 14. If you would have any extra things in your home that you'd like to donate to the school for extra things for students, please feel free to bring those to the Capoja Education Center, to the health office. And one thing, since I am the South St. Paul representative to intermediate school district number 917 at Dakota County down in Rosemont, and we are welcoming back our former superintendent, John Christensen. John will be coming back and serving as our interim superintendent for the next two and a half months until June 30th. So, we welcome back John. I had the opportunity to work with John for several years, so I'm excited to have him come back. He is going to be coming back and working with our assistant, Mark Zuzik, who is retiring at the end of June. And Mr. Christensen will be working with Dr. Michael Favor, who will be our new superintendent taking over on July 1st. So, want to thank John. He'll be working with Mark Zuzik and then welcoming in Michael Favor. So, thank you for doing that. That's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. John?
I want to express some pride in a group of our students. We are in unprecedented times, and I think our students have faced such an incredibly challenging year. Last Monday on the 19th, students across the state organized a walkout to draw attention to racial equality. And our Black Pride organization took note to that and took the leadership. And taking that moment and choosing to take that risk, to have your voice heard for your concerns, I think is a remarkable lesson for everyone to learn, and I'm really proud of the students who participated in it.
Thank you. And Nikki?
Well, thanks for stealing my thunder. No, I was just going to say that I drove down to the high school at 1:00 on Monday, and I, the kids were already out of the building and were heading towards the police station. And I pulled over and I rolled my window down, and they all kind of looked at me, you know, a little scared. And I just gave them props and said, you know, "Good for you guys. This is, you're finding your voice, and, you know, I totally support you in what you're doing," you know. And honestly, the faces of all the different cultures and color and ethnicity, smiling, you know, at me, and I was just so taken by their beauty and that they had the courage of their own convictions. So, I congratulate all of them for not being afraid to speak up.
All right. Thank you. I have one little story that kind of proves the point where you never quite know when you might have something that makes an impact on you. I was over by Lincoln Center the other morning, and it was raining and kind of cold, and the crossing guards were out. So, I crossed with them and did the flags out and flags in and everything, and then I thanked them. I said, "Thank you for crossing me," and, jeez, "I'm sorry that you're having to stand out here in the cold and the rain." And one of the crossing guards looked up at me, you know, probably about a fifth grader probably, and just smiled and said, "Hey, we signed up for this." I just thought, you know, that here they are in this kind of a gross situation. They're cold and wet and everything, but yet the attitude is, "Hey, you know, we said we'd do this, so we're going to do it, and we'll make the best of it." And I just thought, boy, that's something I'm going to carry with me for a while now in whatever situations I get into with school or work or home or whatever. Just say, "Hey, we signed up for this. We're going to just do it." So, anyway, just wanted to share that. We do have a closed session tonight, so I'm looking for a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do need to point out that the closed session is for negotiations tonight. Hearing no other discussion, I'll just say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the meeting is closed. Thank you.